We are going to be doing our We're going to be doing our interviews in public session next. What you have at your place is a yellow folder that should have your name on it. In that folder, you have a cover sheet with the candidate's name. This is where you can take your own memories of each candidate so that you have that information when we begin this discussion and I've attached the information that the candidate provided. It is in the order that we expect to be welcoming the candidates, which will be alphabetical order. To the left, you see the list of names that we're going to be calling them in. And I did let the candidates in, but they're going to be coming in here one at a time. Once they've completed their interview, they're welcome to step out, they're welcome to go back to the media center, they're welcome to leave, they're welcome to stay in public session. But they're just waiting in the media center until it's their turn. And all of the questions are there to the left. I will time the forty-five second introduction that each of them were asked to be prepared with. And then I can ask the questions for each of the candidates. And have a conclusion on the four questions. Well, the presentation and three questions with the conclusion that the Board of Education has a follow-up that of the candidate's answer, we'll have time to ask then. But we are asking all of the candidates the exact same questions to ensure consistency. And once again, you can take them from that memory sheet that I've provided for each candidate. Does anybody have any questions before we start? I'm going to go get the first candidate. Oh yeah, that'd be great. Go to Stacy. And it'll be just a brief time between each candidate that either Chris or I will have to do that.
Hi Stacy, thank you so much for coming.
That's the first time you've been in the media center.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, Board of Education, this is Stacy Clayton. She is our first candidate. Stacy, just to let you know, all the Board of Education members have the information that you provided us in front of them. So they can reference that. And as you know, as I shared with each of you, you'll have forty-five seconds to introduce yourself, including your professional background. And that will be timed, I'll let you know when that forty-five seconds is concluded. And then we'll have a series of three questions after that.
Awesome.
Okay, so you can start whenever you're ready.
Hey, I'm Stacy Clayton. I'm proud to say that my voice will be the fourth generation of our family who was born and raised in Long Island. Third generation that will attend to create Harrison Township School this year. I'm currently working in the revoke administrative role so I can spend more time raising my family. I was formerly an educator, a coach, and a youth group leader at our local church. All of these experiences can show that I'm very passionate about growing the minds of our future. I plan to collaborate respectively with all the administrative team, all Board members, and the community to continue to equip the next generation.
Thank you. Please tell us how many Board of Education meetings you have attended in the last twelve to twenty-four months? And what led to your application for this open board position over joining the ballot for the November election?
So I, to be honest, I haven't attended any Board meetings. I do look over, I did look over some of the notes from Harrison Township. When I'm working Woodsdale, I would also always review their notes. Usually it's on the transcript, but when I was working, my main priority was to be home with my family. I just saw this opportunity and really felt led to, you know, I'm very passionate about education and I want to, I love this school when I went to it, and I want this being for my children. I'm very passionate about the things that are going on in schools and making sure it's appropriate. So I felt like I should give it a shot to get my ideas and opinions.
How would you describe or define the job of a Board of Education member in New Jersey?
I would define it by being a voice for the people of the community, I think is the most important thing. So knowing the community, knowing what parents want. And making sure you can bring that to the Board and present effectively while also carrying in your good opinions. I don't think it should be solely based off of our good opinions. We should kind of be able to bring the opinions of all the public. I also think I'm in a unique position where I see what happened in the forefront as a teacher. So I kind of have that perspective as well of how the teachers are dealing with the brunt of these meetings along with the students and the other Board members.
What do you see as the biggest challenge facing the Harrison Township Board of Education currently? Please be as specific as possible.
I don't have a lot of insight on what goes on directly in these meetings. But I would just say making sure you can all collaborate as a team and be respectful of other people's opinions. Acknowledge them, hear them, listen to other people. Kind of just keep it how you would imagine. I always say everything we do is kind of reflected back in elementary school. But as a teacher, we expect our kids to collaborate in groups and be respectful. You yell at a kid, they got that line. But then as adults, I feel like sometimes we forget those rules. So just being respectful of all the opinions, hearing them, and being able to still walk out of here and respecting each other versus having animosity towards each other. So I think that is a very strong reflection of our community. If other people saw us in public and I couldn't talk to one of you, I don't think that's a very good taste to leave for the community. I kind of respect all of you and honor all of your opinions even if they're different than mine.
Any Board members have any follow-up questions specifically come while we ask? Okay, Stacy, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And as I said earlier, you are welcome to say whatever you need to know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, Stacy?
Hey.
We have a follow-up question.
Okay.
I'll die.
No worries.
Okay, who is it now?
As you know, this position is only for one year.
Yes.
So do you or would you plan on sticking around for longer than a year if?
Yeah, if we saw it, absolutely. Like I said, I'm not just very passionate about it this year, but I'm passionate about not only my kids, but all of my friends' kids, my family and this community. So just making sure that I can be a representative for them and keep getting what belongs in schools, in schools.
Absolutely. Sorry about that Stacy.
No worries.
Good evening. Yeah, okay. So Daniel French is next. Ladies and gentlemen, Board of Education, this is Daniel French, our second candidate. Daniel, thank you so much for coming. As we discussed with all of the candidates in the media center, you're going to start the season's interview with a forty-five second introduction, including any professional background. And then we have a three or four follow-up questions that we will ask after that. And then at the conclusion of that, if the Board of Education has anything that they would have asked, they want clarification on from your answers, they'll have time to do that. So whenever you're ready, you can start in forty-five minutes and when, uh, forty-five seconds and when that time is up, I will let you know how forty-five minutes is.
All right. Nice to meet you all. My name is Daniel French. My wife and I are proud to live in Malika Hill. We have three young children with my oldest Olivia, having just started at Harrison. And I just want to take a moment to thank you guys because the experience for onboarding has been awesome from the bus drivers to the staff. So she wakes up excited every day, which is really cool to see. From my educational background, I hold a degree in electrical engineering and computer science. From a professional background, I've always been at the intersection of technology and leadership. Having founded a consulting company ten years ago, we're focused in AI software development. And we partner a lot with P E I research and pharmaceutical companies. So, you know, looking after the benefit of children is something I'm definitely passionate about from a professional lens as well as a parent. So thanks for the opportunity and look forward to the questions.
Please tell us how many Board of Education meetings you have attended in the last twelve to twenty-four months? And what led to your application for this open board position over joining the ballot in the November, November election?
So I've been to none, full transparency here, but I've done a lot of other in-town meetings around the township. But I just wanted to have a apparent contribution to the Board. So I've been very motivated to attend this, obviously today, and then the bus drive.
How would you describe or define the job of a Board of Education member in New Jersey?
To me, I think it's more about governance than probably it is management. Helping set the vision, making sure there's financial, practical financial decisions made, but not so much in the day-to-day activities of the management. Making sure that there's good open dialogue between the staff as well.
What do you see as the biggest challenge facing the Harrison Township Board of Education currently? Please be as specific as possible.
To me, I think one of the biggest opportunities that I noticed at the very town of Technology Committee, which at today's emergence and pace of AI is making its way into all of our lives. I think we need to have a lot of practical and balanced decisions around how we expose children to technology. We don't quite know the sociological effects of how AI is becoming a crush for a lot of people on a day-to-day basis. And I think that's ever more present to make sure that we handle some of those decisions appropriately as it relates to the children. And make sure that it amplifies their creative genius and not really be a crush that they're going to develop.
Do any of the Board of Education members have a follow-up question to Daniel's responses? And any other follow-up questions?
Yes. I was asking. As you're aware, this is the one-year position.
Yes.
So the question is, would you look to remain?
I would love to remain. I would like to be actively responsible.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much, Daniel.
Thank you guys, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of Board of Education, this is Janice Kaborvick, our candidate.
Hi.
And Janice, as I mentioned to all of the candidates, you will start your interview with a forty-five second introduction. And I will time that and let you know when that time is up. And then after that, we have a series of three or four questions that we're asking all of our candidates.
Okay.
And at the conclusion of that, if the Board of Education needs any clarification on the answers that you provided to those questions, they'll ask at that time.
Great.
Okay? So you can begin anytime you're ready.
Janice Kaborvick, I live in Malika Hill. My husband, two kids. My daughter is in the preschool program at Harrison and my son is in second grade at Harrison. My professional work, I am the Director of Product Management, Communications, and Marketing for the company that I work for. Here at Packaging Company, so I've been in packaging my whole career. Managing product development, new product innovation, all of our communications internal and external to our customers. And I manage our communications marketing and product development team. And in my free time, I volunteer as much as I can at Harrison and lots of extra for children's kids.
Thank you. Please tell us how many Board of Education meetings you have attended in the last twelve to twenty-four months? And what led to your application for this open Board of Education position over joining the ballot for November?
I have not attended any Board of Education meetings. We moved to Malika Hill two and a half years ago. We knew we wanted to be here. I've got this announcement that I've lived here, my husband's family lives here. So we knew we wanted to be here, but it was quite difficult to get to be home in Malika Hill. So we're really happy that we did that. But our, you know, focus has been on changing jobs and getting established. So I've not attended any Board of Education meetings. I looked to join when we first moved here. There didn't appear to be any open positions. So it's kind of, I've been volunteering at the school as much as possible. And it was literally online when I talked up that there was an open position. So I thought, finally, there's something open. So, yeah, I want to be involved as much as I can. Obviously, my children are still young in the district. So you can so see at their young age how impacted they are by the teachers that they have. And obviously, they spend a lot of time at school, more than they spend with us every day. So they have such positive experiences so far. And I hope that continues in any way I can get a part of that, whether it's offering things from my professional career for the Board or being another member. You know, could positively impact them as well as their friends and the community, but I'm sure I will.
How would you describe or define the job of a Board of Education member in New Jersey?
So supporting, working with the superintendent, making decisions on what's best for the staff, the students, the community. Managing the budget, which is not that easy to ask, lots of different opinions, needs, questions. Ensuring the, all at the same time, doing all that, ensuring the safety of the staff and the students is up the forefront. And ultimately, helping make decisions for short-term and long-term, correct? So we can use improvement of all areas of what's happening in our school district.
What do you see as the biggest challenge facing the Harrison Township Board of Education currently? Please be as specific as possible.
So I'm not sure I have a list of challenges. Like I said, I've had a very positive experience so far with Harrison. The teachers that my, my son's in second grade, my daughter's third grade. But all of his teachers seem to have been with Harrison for a while. So I know often we look at longevity of the staff, making sure they're happy and turnover. I haven't experienced that yet. Could potentially be something that I just haven't experienced yet. And I think everything I've seen so far related to safety, which is something I always look forward to. Kids at least in Harrison has been great. So my guess, if I could, I have to make a guess, I would say that probably managing the budget in a community like this where, you know, we're a very tight-knit community. Everybody, you know, obviously wants the best for the students. I would imagine that budgets across New Jersey are very difficult right now to manage. And make sure that we're trying to be happy for our students.
Is there any follow-up questions regarding Janice's answers by Board of Education? Any other follow-up questions?
Last follow-up one.
As for example?
Um, as you know, the position is for one month, for one year.
Yes.
Your position. So the question is, would you look to remain after the one, after the one year? Understanding it's a, it's elections after that, but would you be looking to remain?
Yes, provided nothing substantially changes in my life that doesn't offer me the flexibility to give my time or something. But yeah, absolutely.
Any other follow-ups? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Justin, thank you so much for coming. As I had stated to all the candidates in the media center, you're going to start the season's interview with a forty-five second introduction, including your professional background. After that, we have three or four follow-up questions. And at the conclusion of that time, if the Board of Education has any clarifications that they need from the answers that you provide, there'll be time to do that. So whenever you are ready, you can start that forty-five second introduction. I'll let you know when the time's up.
Thank you so much. I'm interested in you. I've lived in the township now for eight years. My wife, seven, my two boys, and Eric currently in fourth and second grade in our school district. Professionally, I currently serve as a high school principal. This is my sixteenth year of education. I started as a substitute teacher, worked my own, so I'm a social studies teacher. I've come from a high school and eventually became a supervisor there. This is my third year as a high school principal. I'm here tonight because I know that we have an awesome school district. I look to my professional, professional experiences and my personal experiences to contribute to your board.
Please tell us how many Board of Education meetings you have attended in the last twelve to twenty-four months? And what led to your application for this open board position over joining the ballot for the November election?
This board, zero base. As, as far as I go, it's my working as a time, but I have not been to any meetings for the Board of Education. As far as, again, joining our, our, we're aiming for this position. Again, I can really think that I can contribute a lot based on my professional experiences. As a humanities supervisor, I've worked with our senior district schools to redesign our K-12, my advanced curriculum. So I would work through the building blocks and the foundations that were necessary. And kindergarten, all the way to kindergarten school, and then what we wanted at the high school. So a lot of programs that we use are not ready. I help people when they are sending students, you know, there. So the curriculum that we potted down, we started to use in those schools, but then also at our school.
How would you describe or define the job of a Board of Education member in New Jersey?
It's a difficult job. Obviously, I live in the community, so you have a lot of parents who are going to graduate here. Share personally, it's a couple of people each, it can happen with their individual student's experience. However, as a Board member, you have to take things with account the entire experience of all the students in our school. So just again, using your, your knowledge and your, your balanced decision-making to try to make the best decision for everybody that's there. Again, like I said, Board members have to have the tough, always being there to support your administrative staff, your teaching staff. They are extremely valuable pieces right now in the educational picture of what's going on in New Jersey. It's hard to find top teacher or good teachers. It's tough to find really good administrators to support the student on a daily basis. So making sure you have that in the backbone of the decisions they make as well as whatever's the best interest of the students should be what I'm hoping for in the future.
What do you see as the biggest challenge facing the Harrison Township Board of Education currently? Please be as specific as possible.
Very difficult question to answer. I have tremendous experience here. I, I think just the overall political environment of what schools are currently going through. Feeling like if you made a decision, you're going to upset the entire balance on one side of a political fence or another. It's most likely the decision we're making a lot right now is based around inclusiveness and inclusivity in schools. Going on to maybe should have as much information as possible before you make that decision. So that you can say, we made the best educational decision. I would rather get the follow-up to this question.
Any follow-up questions to Justin's answer to Board of Education? Any other follow-up questions?
Yes. Just, just, just. The position is for one year. The question is, my question is, would you plan on sticking around after the one year? Essentially, would you then be willing to run for three years?
Yep. It's kind of exciting, much like, yeah. Great question. It would be my first time running my, my ballot in the sense of being a school member. I would definitely be interested in that, especially if my experience was very positive here. So somebody that, like I said, never had a second grader. So I would be very interested in sticking around as long as, you know, he was still in the industry. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Any other follow-ups?
I have one question too. So mission L O I, we went on a mission as a priori, so we need a teacher to go on and increase. Just give us a color on what those were.
So a lot of what we do at my current high school, we use a lot of T R C S E L programs. So a lot of social emotional learning programs. So we brought on programs like Challenge Day, which allows students to kind of interact in smaller settings with their, with staff members to make sure that they feel that they have, at least they have one trusted adult, one trusted student on campus. Building out those things with the student must. The students who presented tonight, we started those initiatives at our school, Wonder Non-Leadership, to do the same thing, just at the high school level, and come back and share. The good things that they were doing at the high school, with the Board of Education, and spreading some of those things. And just, we do a positive or two positive staff events each month as well, just to again, make sure our staff are valued while they are in our schools.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Board, this is Dr. Brene Martini. She is our next candidate. Brene, as I mentioned to all of the candidates, you will introduce yourself in a forty-five second introduction, including any pertinent or professional background. And I will let you know when that time's up, if you are still speaking. And we will have three to four follow-up questions that we're asking everyone after that. And at the conclusion of that time, if the Board of Education has any questions specifically about your answers that they want clarified, they'll have time to do that. So you can start anytime you're ready.
So hi, everyone. I am Brene Martini. Very excited to apply for the vacancy. I think what I hope sets me apart in my application for the seat is my literary perspective that I would like to bring to the Board. So I've had a twenty-plus year career in educational education. I started as a kindergarten teacher right here in South Jersey. And then from there, went back for my master's at the University of Pennsylvania. And from there, I didn't plan all this, which is kind of how things happen. Went and pursued my PhD at University of Maryland. I'm currently working I'm currently working as a professor of teacher education at our university. So I've actually prepared a lot of the teachers who work in our schools. They're wonderful. I'm personally wonderful, real proud to be a part of that pipeline for everyone.
That's forty-five seconds.
Okay.
So, please tell us how many Board of Education meetings you have attended in the last twelve to twenty-four months? And what led to your application for this open board position over joining the ballot for the November election?
So I have been on the ballot before. I decided to not run on the ballot again because I am not a, I'm a very conflictual person, so I don't, didn't want to put my family through that. Things may sub socially, I don't think through the education and that, discuss that. I listened into a lot of board meetings. I attended one meeting, I believe it was last January in person, but I do listen in pretty much.
How would you describe or define the job of a Board of Education member in New Jersey?
So I would define and describe the job of a Board of Education member in New Jersey as someone who, where the board sets policies, approves budgets, and make sure schools are running well, make sure there's safe spaces for children, well resourced, and physically responsible as well.
What do you see as the biggest challenge facing the Harrison Township Board of Education currently? Please be as specific as possible.
Okay, so I think based on car board and also in my conversation with the national league, as a teacher with commitment and intention, it's a struggle, right? There are, I see it at other, you have a lot less students and students becoming teachers. That's a problem, right? So we're all, school districts are competing for a much smaller pie, so it's, so I always think that's the biggest, in my mind, biggest issue because we know that talent and teacher and that's all the difference in child's education. Number one predictor of success for a child is the teacher. So I would think that commitment and intention is challenging everywhere.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions to raise the answers for the Board of Education? I know we have one follow-up question here.
Yes. Yes, that question is, understanding that this position is for one year. And you also mentioned that you didn't want to go through stuff. However, elections sometime take stuff. But the question is, would you be willing to go through the stuff? Like the way I asked you, would you be willing to go on the ballot to essentially?
I would be willing to go on the ballot again, you know, in the past. Absolutely, I would be willing to do it again. I am committed to this work. This is what I do in my day-to-day life. I work in education. I work with school districts on school improvement. I want to contribute to the community, absolutely, about again.
Any other follow-ups? That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for everything.
It was called teens.
Teens, yeah.
So sorry, I didn't pronounce it correctly.
No, no, you're right.
Yeah. So this is our Board of Education. You are our next candidate. And as I had said in our brief meeting prior to, all of our candidates will have forty-five seconds to introduce yourself. We're asking that you have some professional background or highlights in there. And then we will follow up with three or four additional questions that we're asking all of the candidates consistently. And at the conclusion of that, if any of the board has any questions or follow-up to the answers that you provide, they will ask at that time.
Okay.
So whenever you're prepared, you can start.
All right, so let me explain my first name, Keenzia. So my parents are immigrants from Sicily. So I came over and I, they spoke Italian, and that's how I have the name. So I grew up in a Italian household. I have a lifelong love for Italy. I majored in elementary education from Pink College. I was a, I taught first, second, and third grade, and then I had a change of thought and I wanted to be a world language teacher. So I've been teaching world languages for twenty years. Most of those twenty years, I've been at the Harrison Township School District where I currently work. This year, I took on the instructional supervisor job. And I still actually have to keep a tiny one because we've been trying to replace it.
Thank you very much. Please tell us how many Board of Education meetings you have attended in the last twelve to twenty-four months? And what led to your application for this open board position over joining the ballot for the November election?
Well, I haven't attended any of these Board of Education meetings, but went to for Harrison Township. I decided, since I've been an advocate for, you know, Harrison Township for all of my lifetime, for students, teachers, just in general for the school, I figured I might put the same effort into the my, and my, my school here.
How would you describe or define the job of a Board of Education member in New Jersey?
Well, I feel that it would be a collaborative team effort to make sure that, I'm sure you have goals for the school district, whether it be, you know, making sure that our students are safe, you know, and that we have a bigger goal for these kids and that we provide services for all children and needs for all new children so that they can succeed in their own paths. Also, I feel that kids also need a social emotional support. So I feel that our goal is to make sure that we support the teachers because it's a part of life for the teachers right now, and we support the kids that are learning. And anything that goes into it, you know, whether it be supplies for the school district, you know, building maintenance, you know, the correct foods that they're eating in the cafeteria, the supplies for the classroom, you know, anything that makes the school district work well.
What do you see as the biggest challenge facing the Harrison Township Board of Education currently? Please be as specific as possible.
Challenges? Let's see. I'm not too, to tell you the truth, I'm not too familiar with your challenges, but if I look at, you know, world challenges, I think, you know, sometimes like kids, students learn in different ways. And, you know, with, you know, budget issues, like if you have budget cuts, then you probably have to make budget cuts for teachers, which should cause problems for supporting kids in classroom. Student achievement, I think you did really well on that aspect. I think P U S came out number one. I did research that. So I think you're on the right path of that. But I think with the ever-changing world and ever-changing curricula, it's hard to keep everybody on that same path. So I think that's pretty much, I mean, I, to tell you the truth, I have researched it. I'm a monster since I'm, I'm muted this.
Any follow-up questions on answers by any of the Board of Education? Any other follow-up questions?
Yes. My question is, given this position is a twelve-month position, would you be willing to stick around or have your name placed on the ballot?
Sure. Absolutely.
Any, any other follow-ups? Okay, thank you so much. That concludes our questions.
I never don't mind having it.
Oh, no. No, no, of course, that's why I said that.
All right. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. He was trying to tell me how to get out, and he doesn't know how to get out. Remember how to get out.
Did you park in the front of the school?
Right, in the front of the school.
Make a rain because you're going to roll down to the gym and the doors to your left.
Okay. He told him to that.
Chris, you got stuck in the building?
I still don't know the building. All right. Did you help me? Thanks, I appreciate it.
Okay, Board of Education, this is Alexis Verbino, our next candidate. And Alexis, as I said to all of the candidates, you will have thirty questions at the end to introduce yourself. And we'll ask that you put your professional background in that introduction. And when time's up, I'll let you know if you are still speaking. And then we're going to follow up with three or four additional questions that we're asking all of our candidates. And then if the board has any follow-up questions at the conclusion of that from the answers that you provided, there will be time for them to ask them. Okay? So you, just give me one second. You can start whenever you're ready.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Alexis Verbino, and I appreciate your consideration for the Board of Education. Professionally, I'm a business and online industry. Personally, I'm a parent, taxpayer, and prior Board of Education member. Respectfully, my priorities as a board member are first of students and their families, second to taxpayers of Harrison Township to ensure every dollar is spent wisely, and third to our teachers. The reason for that is in all due respect, those that continue are already well represented by the N J E A and the board. As someone who's not affiliated with you, it's my responsibility to work with them and support our teachers and, but also to ensure the hardworking families of A T S are represented financially and according to their values. As a potential decision maker for average hour spend, it would be my duty to ensure our children are receiving the best possible education while respecting the fundamental rights of their parents. Our board must reflect the principles of our taxpayer families.
Justin.
Please tell us how many Board of Education meetings you have attended in the last twelve to twenty-four months? And what led to your application for this open board position over joining the ballot for the November election?
In the last twelve to twenty-four months, it would have been twelve to fourteen, most of them as a board member. So what led me to apply for this position was my previous experience, and I very much enjoyed contributing to the community as a board member and wanted to pursue it.
How would you describe or define the job of a Board of Education member in New Jersey?
A Board of Education member is to ensure that our students are getting the best education possible while reflecting the values of our taxpayers.
What do you see as the biggest challenge facing the Harrison Township Board of Education currently? Please be as specific as possible.
Based on what I'm seeing as prior board member, I would say balancing the budget, ensuring that we are maximizing every dollar to ensure that the kids are getting the best education and getting the best value for our money.
Any follow-up questions from the board on the answers that were provided? Any other follow-up questions? Okay, thanks a lot.
Yes. Given that this position is a twelve-month position, would you be willing to stick around? Would we be able to remain back on the ballot, I guess?
The back, which is so traumatizing.
Just ask.
I think that first and foremost, I would want to serve out the remainder of this term, and I would certainly be open to it upon its location.
Any other questions? Okay, so we have, thank you. And as I had shared with all of the candidates when we had that great discussion, we are going to start your interview with forty-five seconds of introduction that we just asked that you could add any professional highlights. After that, we will have three or four questions that we're asking all of the candidates. And if the board has any follow-up questions to the answers that you provide, there will be time for them to do so. So you can begin anytime you're ready.
Hi, everybody. My name is Michelle Siventa, and I'm excited to be representing teachers. Thank you. I'm a parent of a student in kindergarten and also a public school educator myself, so I understand the opportunities and challenges that we face supporting our children's education. My role as a school administrator, I have daily hands-on experience with the airworkings of school and making sure that we're supporting our staff and our students and getting the things that they need to be successful. So I feel that what we're doing here tonight is my passion to use that experience, but also support the educators and foster a school community where we can all put our energy that we have together to succeed. I hope to be able to bring my experience to support, you know, all of you during this long-term position and also become a member of the team. If anyone has it, do you?
Please tell us how many Board of Education meetings you have attended in the last twelve to twenty-four months? And what led to your application for this open board position over joining the ballot for the November election?
Sure. So I am a public school administrator, so I'll be honest, I attend a lot of my public school meetings. I have not attended any here. I have my daughter, like I said, she's in kindergarten, and I know the importance of what it means to have the support of the board if I'm a administrator, and I also want to give back to our school community. So now that I'm seeing it daily from my child coming home every night and seeing what she has, I know that, you know, I saw the positions open and I feel like this is my, this is what I do every day. I can bring my experience to join this team and, you know, bring my contributions.
How would you describe or define the job of a Board of Education member in New Jersey?
So the board, the job of a member of the Board of Education is not to approve policy and budget, it's also to support the daily happenings in the school as recommended by the superintendent. I think it's important as a member of the board to be visible and be involved and to, you know, support not only for my own student, but for all the students here at the Harrison Township School District, to make sure that everybody has a baby.
What do you see as the biggest challenge facing the Harrison Township Board of Education currently? Please be as specific as possible.
I think challenges. I think challenges specific to all the words without seeing here about funding a budget and making sure how can we appropriate or use the resources appropriately that we have. Sometimes, you know, safe money formula changes and we don't get all the money that we expect or that we believe we should get, and it's how do we take what we have and make it more and pick those out of it. So I think, you know, being sure that we are thinking full circle, big picture, and making sure we're supporting every junior learner that's on our system.
Any follow-up questions to the answers that were provided by the board? Any other follow-ups?
This position, as you know, where it's open for twelve months. The question is, would you be willing to stick around or place your name on the ballot the next go- the next go-round?
Yeah, absolutely. It's important to give back to the community, and I'm not going anywhere, so, you know, the board needs to be involved.
Anything else? Thank you.
Oh, if you want.
All right, so now we go back into our regular number. So that brings us to the first audience participation. So wait to be recognized by your board vice president. State your full name and address. Wait, talk, identify the agenda item you want to come on. Limit your comments to specific agenda items, and you will have three minutes for your comments. For anyone that would like to speak.
Kelly Redcoles, 119 Leaky Boulevard. The agenda item is the interviews. I appreciate seeing so many people coming here to do interviews. I know it's not easy. But what I recognize and hopefully the board recognizes is that you don't see these people on the ballot, and there is a reason for that. One of the candidates spoke about that and her experience based on some of the campaign that had been done and the effects that maybe it has on their family. I'm hoping that the person that is chosen by this board is picked based on their credentials and strong understanding of education to navigate the struggles that education is facing. I know many have children in this district as well, which is also important. I am aware that the previous board member that interviewed does not have children in this district and also profited off of selling baked goods at a school event while she was a board member. I really hope that this process is fair and that you come in with an open mind. There was ten people here tonight that took their time out to be interviewed. I don't hate or whatever. It's a lot. And I think that speaks highly of the interest, but also the difficulty with putting yourself out there. And I heard a lot of positive things from people wanting to be up on the board. And I hope that you take this time and you give everybody a fair shot.
Is there anyone else?
Am I allowed to make a public comment? Thank you. Alexis Verbino, 101. Oh, gosh, what's my address? Rosie and Way. Sorry, it's new. The reason that it was hard for me was actually because of my prior person speaking. I was harassed and bullied. So if it's hard to be on the ballot, that's why. And regarding the baked goods, all the money was donated back with the next event that was thus. I have donated thousands of dollars to the school through my business, so there was no profit that night. But thank you so much for checking with me first before trying to put me on last again. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so that brings us to the approval of the minutes. Any questions, comments?
Todd Baron?
Yes.
Tim Bass?
Yes.
Jennifer Bone?
Yes.
Walter Bright?
Yes.
John Capital?
Yes.
Jeanette Coslin?
Yes.
Colleen Kendrick?
Yes.
Shannon White?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Next is our committee report. So versus finance, Walter?
Well, there's really nothing new. However, we did meet briefly prior to tonight's meeting. There is one item that we may be trying to push rather quickly, which has to do with, which has to do with cameras. Could be the discussion on that. While there's nothing past that just yet, just so I would mention it, just as a mention. But other than that, there is nothing new to.
If I could, I'm sorry. So as Mr. Bright said, we met with the Finance Buildings and Special Buildings and Grounds Meeting Committee before the meeting. And the main purpose of the meeting was to review some of the major needs from a facility standpoint at district level. Kind of started talking about our long-range facilities plan. Part of that discussion, when we're talking about our property management and facilities, would certainly be the security of the facilities. So although the meeting was short prior to this meeting this evening, we certainly had meetings that we're going to be scheduling now and moving into budget season, which basically starts in December. And one of the main needs that we're really talking about besides the obvious facilities needs would be updating our security and camera resources. So it was part of a long list of things that we're looking at the need and looking deeper into how to address that need in the coming year. But certainly, the Board of Education will be brought into the fold just as soon as we get some more information on it.
She spoke that so well.
Don Frick? I think personnel. Negotiations, Jen?
Yeah, so one of contracts were drawn up and executed, so we are done. As always, I'd like to thank our team, Mr. Bright, Dr. Friddy, and Mr. Santino, especially for jumping in as soon as your feet hit housing, so we appreciate that.
Thanks, Jen. Todd, or Portabel?
No, we're the Portabel.
Jeanette, public relations, yes, yes, yes.
So the PR committee met on Thursday, October sixteenth. Three topics of, mainly three topics of discussion. The first one, which we saw tonight, which I'm so excited about, was student ambassadors. Thank you so, so much for bringing them and preparing them tonight. So all of you saw, we had the students come tonight. These are select few students that are on the Student Council Committee and PBS. And we welcome them to join future meetings, which will be predetermined at a certain point, to obviously present district-wide all-knowing student activities, just all the exciting things that are happening in the district. I know it was awesome. They did such a great job.
Yeah.
Yeah, seriously. Another topic to share, another update. So board meeting dates have now been added to the website calendar or events along with the principal's weekly newsletters that are sent out to both HTS and PBS families. Additionally, board meeting dates from January through June will be sent home with students after the next reorganization meeting in January. So just FYI on that. And then additionally, addition to that, tentative meeting dates from January through June will be added to the school district calendar given out to students in September. So this fun calendar that they bring home that are put on open refrigerators. Hopefully, you'll have them in your coffee. So you'll see in the future, tentative dates will be on those as well, from January to June, because right now they only show September to December.
That's great.
Thank you. And then finally, moving forward, just FYI, the phone-in option for board meetings will be removed. This decision was made based on a review of various surrounding school districts and how they provide access to board meetings, as well as a review that was conducted of the phone usage from January of twenty-five to current date. So as you can see, that began tonight. And that's it.
Thank you. Something for school safety. Share Services, John?
No.
And Transportation, Tim?
Nothing to report.
Any delegate or representative's reports? Great. Okay, so we have four items under correspondence. Then we have ten under the Business of Education report. Any motions to approve items on the ten?
I will make that motion. I'll second. I'll see.
And then John Capital. Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call.
Todd Baron?
Yes.
Tim Bass?
Yes.
Jennifer Bone?
Yes.
Walter Bright?
Yes.
John Capital?
Yes.
Jeanette Coslin?
Yes.
Colleen Kendrick?
Yes.
Shannon White?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Next is. Next is Superintendent Support, and under Personnel, there are sixteen items for approval. Can I get a motion to approve? I'll make that motion. Okay. Thanks, Jeanette. Thanks, Colleen. Any questions or comments?
Item thirteen and fourteen are additional extracurricular positions that, again, are in addition to the positions that have already been approved. And that will be all filled in throughout this month prior to the next board meeting, so that will be on your agenda to get me to November. I think there's a couple of staff members I need to speak to before it's voted through. So thirteen and fourteen, we do not have names just yet. We will for next month.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call.
Todd Baron?
Yes.
Tim Bass?
Yes.
Jennifer Bone?
Yes.
Walter Bright?
Yes.
John Capital?
Yes.
Jeanette Coslin?
Yes.
Colleen Kendrick?
Yes.
Shannon White?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Under Education, there are five items for approval. Can I please get a motion, motion to approve?
I'll make that one.
Thank you, Todd. I'll second. Thanks, Jen. Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call.
Todd Baron?
Yes.
Tim Bass?
Yes.
Jennifer Bone?
Yes.
Walter Bright?
Yes.
John Capital?
Yes.
Jeanette Coslin?
Yes.
Colleen Kendrick?
Yes.
Shannon White?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Under Administration, there are six items for approval. Can I get a motion?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Walter.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jeanette. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Todd Baron?
Yes.
Tim Bass?
Yes.
Jennifer Bone?
Yes.
Walter Bright?
Yes.
John Capital?
Yes.
Jeanette Coslin?
Yes.
Colleen Kendrick?
Yes.
Shannon White?
Yes.
Motion passed.
There's nothing with the policies. There's one item under Transportation, and I get a motion to approve those. Thanks, John.
Colleen.
Colleen, second. Okay. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Todd Baron?
Yes.
Tim Bass?
Yes.
Jennifer Bone?
Yes.
Walter Bright?
Yes.
John Capital?
Yes.
Jeanette Coslin?
Yes.
Colleen Kendrick?
Yes.
Shannon White?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Under Buildings and Grounds, there are two items for approval. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Thanks, Tim.
I'll.
Second?
I'll second.
Walter? Walter, second. Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call.
Todd Baron?
Yes.
Tim Bass?
Yes.
Jennifer Bone?
Yes.
Walter Bright?
Under two, the first, well, the first thing listed, which is H2YB, I must have standing from that one portion, being a board member of that organization. So the rest of it, yes.
There you go. Gotcha. John Capital?
Yes.
Jeanette Coslin?
Yes.
Colleen Kendrick?
Yes.
Shannon White?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great. So next is new business.
Yes, thank you. Refer to the several Board of Education meetings. As I mentioned last month, December meeting date, we have a conflict on Monday, December the fifteenth. And I did get full availability from our Board of Education to officially move the December meeting to Tuesday the sixteenth. So I just want to let everyone know publicly that we did solidify that date, and we will be updating that and making the proper steps to inform the public of that change. There's also a conflict on Monday, November seventeenth. Finding a date for that has proven to be a little bit more difficult. So for the Board of Education members, is anyone not available for Tuesday, November eighteenth? Same time, seven o'clock. And my next date would be Thursday, November twentieth. So it's Tuesday and Thursday of that same week.
You should have the eighteen.
Tuesday the eighteenth or Thursday the twentieth, we can do the two. You're asking if somebody is not available? Is, is anyone not available for either one of those dates?
The twenty, I probably can't.
Okay, so how about Tuesday the eighteenth? You all good for that? Okay, perfect. That was easier than a clock. So same thing, we will make sure that we inform the public. So in November and December, our meetings will actually just be the Tuesday of the same week that it's scheduled rather than the Monday.
Okay.
Okay, and I will send out a reminder and let you set that up.
I'll update the, through the newspaper and on the website.
Perfect. Thank you. Our student ambassadors have already introduced the board to this. Many of you obviously are here from social media resources, but it's told you tonight, so I'm just going to echo what they said, that we have a team of female fifth graders who were recently honored by the New Jersey School Boards Association with a first-place finish in the state's steam tank competition. Just overwhelming. They have no interest in stealing their thunder, not that I ever could. But they will be here during the November meeting. And during that time, the Board of Education and our public guests will have the opportunity to see some video, not only of the kids' presentation of the Unsinkable bracelet, but also of the moment they were informed that they won. So just to give you a general idea, this particular challenge gives our students across the state a chance, a chance to invent, modify, or use problem-solving skills to solve a real-world problem. So with the Unsinkable bracelet, obviously, the problem that they started with and identified was drowning. And the Unsinkable bracelet, like I said, they will discuss in further detail, but that would be a, another tool to prevent drowning in children. And they were honored at this, again, as the Team Tank Elementary Championship at our state-level conference last week in Atlantic City. So children put all of the work in, the planning, and did the presentation like little bosses, and their families supported each of them. True story. When you see the video, it's very impressive. And the parents supported their work, their teachers supported their work. This obviously isn't an overnight project. There's a lot of hours that go in, not only with the children, but also the adults support in their life from our staff to their parents and families. And they were in Atlantic City to be recognized for first place. Second place was Berra School, third place, Robertsville Elementary School. None of those are necessarily in serious, so South Jersey School, they went into first place. As part of that, they were awarded twenty-five hundred dollars, which will be used, obviously, with their employment towards STEAM initiatives and initiatives. So we are overwhelmingly proud of the teachers and parents. And as I said, you will get more representation on that during the president's welcome for next month. But because it has already been out on social media, I did want to just give the board a general overview of what that was about and what it entailed. Additionally, the.
Dr. Friddy?
Yes.
If I may. We will be receiving a check from the New Jersey School Boards Association shortly. Once they do, once we do.
Uh, once they do, once we do, we will then set up a STEAM, um, account, and then the funds will be used solely for their discretion. Whatever it is that they feel they need to continue on, uh, build off of what they already have done, um, lay the groundwork for the next group that's coming in, whatever they choose to do, it's, it's it. So they earned it.
Yep, and they're also probably discussing the next month, but I did hear some rumors that there's some, uh, discussion of a patent.
Yeah, yeah, that they potentially could start a, a patent process, which can be costly, and this is a great start.
Yep. Uh, the Business View Magazine feature, uh, Business View Magazine does a Best in Education series. It's Business View, uh, Civil, Municipal, focusing on the importance of education infrastructure and ensuring access equity and opportunity for young learners, helping to build stronger communities across North America. They reached out to Harrison and asked to do a feature article. So I provided the initial information that they asked for. I've done just one interview, um, with one of their representatives, and we have another interview set up with their editor the first week in November. Um, so we're moving forward and the feature will most likely begin, you know, uh, December or January this coming year. That's obviously something else that, uh, the district has to look forward to and gets us another opportunity to highlight the work of our students and staff. So we certainly are looking forward to that as well. That's all I have. Is there any more questions?
All right.
All right, so that's the second audience participation. Uh, please wait to be recognized, state your name, full name and address, and give three minutes. All right. Okay, so we are going into executive session. Yeah, action. Action, most likely taken, yes, most likely taken. And.
Motion.
Oh, wait a minute, sorry. Um, any motion to go to executive, so then? I'll make that motion, thank you, Jeanette. Second?
I'll say.
Jeanette, thanks. I said I.
Mention, yeah.
Voice vote. Voice vote.
All do?
Hi.
Hi.